I'm going to call to order the September eleventh, twenty twenty-five, meeting of the Forest Park D ninety-one Board of Education. May I have a roll call?
Jed Brewer.
Here.
Andrea Morello. Monique Cotton.
Here.
John Lyons. Steve Rommel.
Here.
Monica Angelo here. And Shannon Woods.
Here. For those who care to participate, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mission statement: Our mission in partnership with home and community is to educate each individual child in a safe and nurturing environment. We will foster respect and self-worth, teach skills relevant to contemporary life, and promote academic success and creative expression. We will encourage an appreciation of the rich cultural diversity of our community and instill a sense of wonder for the future to enable our students to become lifelong learners and responsible citizens of the world. Mr. Rommel, the vision statement?
Forest Park Public School District Ninety-one will be acknowledged by all as a safe, nurturing, and diverse learning community that establishes the highest standards for innovation and continuous improvement to achieve academic excellence and global citizenship for each individual child.
Thank you. Mr. Brewer, the equity imperative?
Recognizing that systemic bias has plagued our educational system, we commit to nurturing dialogue around all issues of inequity, including culture, race, faith, socioeconomic status, gender identity, sexual orientation, and different ability as they pertain to classroom practices, school and district structures, and policies and procedures. We support actions removing barriers to opportunities that allow children to reach their full potential.
Thank you. And Ms. Morello, the statement honoring Native American land, please.
Sure. We Forest Park Board of Education would like to acknowledge that this meeting is being held on the traditional lands of the Peoria, Potawatomi, Miami, Sioux, and Kickapoo people, and pay our respect to elders, both past and present.
Thank you. Number four, we are going to conduct our fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget public hearing.
Thank you and good evening. I can't believe this is my fourth year, so my fourth budget presentation. Time does fly pretty fast. But our strategic plan is centered around our students, and it's grounded in our three pillars of learning and achievement, family community engagement, and talent recruitment and development. And we use that to really drive and develop this budget this year. Go all the way back to twenty seventeen where the state of Illinois implemented evidence-based funding. They did a great job with it. It is coming to an end. It is sunsetting. They have not announced what is going to be the new funding plan for school districts in the state, but they said they are working on it. But for the past four years, the state has been able to guarantee an additional three hundred and fifty million dollars to public education. What does that mean for Forest Park? Well, for this school year, that means we get an extra seven hundred and fifteen dollars and four cents. And actually, over the past four years, we've only got an increase of five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars out of that, like additional one billion dollars. So it's not more money they're giving to our district, but they are giving to other districts. And I was at a meeting last week, and the state superintendent did mention that for all those districts that receive that additional funding don't plan on it moving forward because they don't see it put in the budget moving forward.
Yes, Mr. Rommel.
Just a real quick question. Could you address the adequacy target? What does this mean? What does adequacy mean in the context of this document?
The adequacy target looks at, the state looks at how much money we need to fund our school system. And they're saying we have more than enough money to fund it. That's why they're not giving us an additional funding. So that's why they only give seven hundred and fifteen dollars.
Thank you.
And as a follow-up question to that, the seven hundred and fifteen dollars is per student or total to the district?
Total.
Thank you for that clarification.
And it's a total of five thousand seven hundred dollars over five years. That's all we got, additional money. So right now with evidence-based funding, we're guaranteed to never go below the amount. If additional funding comes available, we'll get additional funding, and there's not been additional funding for us to really get.
So just to clarify on the adequacy thing, adequacy is a state criteria. That is not us saying, oh, well, you know, we have more than a hundred and fifty percent of the amount that we need to educate the students in the district. We're just saying adequate, like bare minimum is the state's level. Thank you.
And good example, and their bare minimum is the state says you have to have one nurse and one social worker. We have more than that. So, but their bare minimum, you have to have at least one. A slide showing enrollment. Enrollment has increased for the past couple of years as a result of an additional full-day pre-K, building a climate and culture to retain families and bring families into the district. However, due to declining birth rates, every time I put projections into the software, it says that our enrollment is in a decrease. I would tell you right now, we're seventeen students higher than we were last year at this time. So as they say, if you build it, they will come. I think we continue to build a quality educational program. More and more families then come in. I was just telling Ms. Barnes earlier that this building right across the street, I know it has so many condos for selling it. And I'm seeing that, and hopefully it's attracting more families to come into Forest Park. Looking further at our enrollment data, this graph shows data over the past eighteen years. But really what stands out is that green fluctuating line. That green fluctuating line is the percentage of our students that are classified as low income. And we have a lot of families that go up and down that threshold. But what you can see is that number has been steadily increasing over time. So that means the needs of the children we serve and the families we serve have been increasing. So we want to make sure we're allocating funds to meet their needs.
One quick question for you. That is a state-set standard, that threshold value for low income. Do we know how they are adjusting that year-to-year to account for inflation and higher cost of living generally?
I do not. I could look into it and see, but we could look into it and see. Now, you asked a question, Mr. Rommel, about adequacy and what that's a state metrics. I want to really show and talk to the board and our community that we got to make sure we're allocating the fundings for our students' needs, for the social-emotional learning needs. For the past three years, our operating expense per student has increased truly, but we've also made sure we have aligned it to their students' needs. For example, our per pupil spending is five thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars less when I take away spending for our diverse learners, and our E L population has grown significantly. And I'm going to show you how they've grown over the past couple of years, which drops our per pupil spending to twenty-nine thousand, which is right around the other districts around us. We value smaller class sizes. We value smaller caseloads for our special ed teachers. So that means we have more staff in those positions, which increases our per pupil spending to around thirty-five thousand six hundred dollars. So it is higher than the districts around us, but we're also doing more. For example, the state minimum with the adequacy formula is one social worker. We have four social workers. We have one per school. We have, make sure we have a health staff in each building also when they own, require us to have one for the district. So we're using those funds adequately. Yes.
When it comes to the number of students or the proportion of our population compared to districts around us, are we, do we have more than average, fewer than average, about average number of students who have such special needs?
The state average, I believe, is around fourteen percent. We're at nineteen and a half.
Okay, so not only do we do more, we have more.
Correct.
Thank you.
In addition, we want to make sure that families are not paying for school supplies, not paying for field trips, and not paying for any other learning experiences. Here's the trend data of what that has cost us over time, and that adds about two hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents to our per pupil spending. So that is an additional reason why ours is higher because we're doing more. Most, and we also waive the registration fee. We haven't charged a registration fee for such a long time. And unfortunately, I know some people have paid a thousand dollars for a registration fee for their children to attend school, in a public school. So it's getting high up there. It's about two hundred and fifty dollars per kid on average you're spending.
Well, this goes back to your earlier point about the proportion of our students who are challenged financially, right?
Correct.
We're serving them.
Correct.
Well, we're serving everybody, but...
Yes. So are we getting a return on our investment? Here's our special ed spending. I just singled that out. The light blue represents increase in cost for our special ed teachers. It almost went up by twenty-five percent over the past four years alone. The dark blue represents additional spending for OT staff, occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech therapists. You see how that is increasing? And then the yellow represents having those instructional aids in the classroom to help out with our students. And that, the cost is up twenty-five percent in four years.
So where, sorry, where is the transportation into this cost?
That's not in there. That's coming ever. Talked about our master language learners. In the past four years, that population has doubled. So we're serving a lot more students in that population, so we have to have more staff to serve that population, which also you see the increase of per pupil spending by that fifty-six hundred, basically.
So when you say multilingual, you don't necessarily, that's not necessarily multi, that's children who don't necessarily speak English. English is a second language.
There's all the languages they speak. So we're not just serving one language, it's multiple of languages that we have to serve. Looking at, this graph really shows our cash on hand per day, and it goes all the way back to twenty thirteen. That's that green line. And you see in twenty thirteen was the highest we've ever had, and we've not reached that point since. It goes down quickly, and then it steadily increases and decreases. It's currently on a decrease. That is because we haven't received any revenue, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit later on. I was at a meeting earlier today, and the Cook County Assessors Office was there. Everyone was there from their office. And they said they cannot get into the details of why our funding is delayed. What they would share is that they went to a new system, and the new system is replacing a system that is fifty years old. And when you replace a system that is fifty years old, there's a lot of bugs that you just don't know about, and they're trying to get them all out. But they're confident they're getting them out, and once they go through the growing pains, as they called it, that's what they called it, the growing pains, it would be a much better robust system, and the revenue would flow better, and it'd be more accurate.
And this goes back to why we keep the reserves on hand, right? So we have never had to take out, correct me if I'm wrong, we've never had to take out a loan to make operational payments or even come close, so... And there are school districts who have.
It's been a long time since we have. I think more than fifteen years, twenty, twenty years since we have to do that, yes.
Thank you.
And you're going to see later on, too, in some images that we're going to lose about a third of our fund balance just over the next couple of months because we're receiving no revenue right now. So it's going to drop significantly, and it's going to keep dropping. And at today's meeting, everyone asked a question, when do you think the revenue will come? And they said, we don't have an answer. So there's no answer if it's coming by December, if it's coming in the spring. They just don't know.
But we'll get all of it. When it gets here, we will get all of it. It's not like we're, it's just a time issue.
Correct, but last year, we got a large amount of income in May, and it was from the previous, it was always like a year and a half in the rear. So we get it all, we just don't know when we get it all.
Are you aware if the Assessors Office is planning to pay, in essence, the interest for that money that was sitting in their account and not ours?
I don't think they plan on paying any interest off on that note. But you're talking about billions of dollars they're making interest on. Just to give another perspective of where our funds are spent, their instructional, on instruction, instructional support's about sixty-seven percent, district operations about twenty-five percent. School and district leadership is about seven point four percent for the expenditures this upcoming year. And we, this has been consistent for like the past five years. It normally changes by a point, two, point three, and that's about it once I put in the new budget every year.
Is this fairly consistent with other districts similar to ours?
Yes.
Thank you.
What are the major expenditures that we plan for in this coming budget? We always plan for special ed outplacement tuition. As I showed you, that keeps increasing dramatically, so we just plan for it. Hopefully, we don't get to that point. Additional transportation, food service, which lines, we were planning for about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in that. It has went up last year, went up about six hundred thousand dollars because we are transporting more students. We transport about twenty-eight percent of our students every year.
Is that something that we decide to do on our own, or is that, or is that state requirement?
That's we do on our own as a bonus to parents. State requirement is one point five miles. There is no one who lives in Forest Park who's more than one point five miles away from a school. So that's within walking distance, and there's no safe, safe passage place that's a concern. Like, no one has to cross Harlem to come to our schools. Harlem would be considered a safe passage route. We would have to provide transportation over Harlem. We don't have to do that. But yeah, four years ago, we were only transporting about fifty to sixty kids for the year, and now we're up to about a hundred and seventy students per year.
We voted to expand that coverage last year, the year before. It was a couple of years, a couple of years ago, yeah. So I mean, it makes sense, right? We put it out there, and people started using it.
Correct. And then also professional development, our eighth grade trip. I'm proposing that we redo our science labs this year and really renovate them and bring them into worker spaces for our students, the two science labs that are in the middle school that are right next to each other. Also, we provide twelve permanent subs that I was just talking to districts about this the other day. We haven't really called for a sub in a while now. I think maybe once or twice in the past couple of years, we've called for a sub because we have these twelve permanent subs, and some of them have transitioned into teaching positions. So it's really nice to have them. The students know them. They get to know the staff, the students, the school, the climate and culture, and they provide support. So they're really helping out. And then lastly, proposing just finishing updating our HVAC controls and our systems. We have a couple of units at Garfield, the middle school, and a unit here that are getting old, and I'm told we can't find parts for them anymore. So when they die, they're going to die, and that's it. And we don't want to wait till they die in the winter, and then we have no heat for a couple of days until we get a new unit on there, and then it's an emergency cost, and we don't want to wait till they die in the summer, but we have no air. So there's a couple of them that they're saying they're on their last life. They're about twenty-five years old. And with the life of them is fifteen to twenty years. So want to start looking at, kind of, we replace those.
Quick question, on all of these, but particularly like the eighth grade trip, are these all estimates based on past performance? Are these based on bids? The only reason I'm asking, like, for the eighth grade trip, I think last year we spent much less, because we didn't have as many students go.
Yes.
So it's like ninety thousand dollars, that's, that's a worst case.
Yes, that's if everyone goes, like, and that's for the additional adults. We have, we've only been averaging around a little bit, around above half of the eighth graders going. I think last year we had a little bit more. I think each year as we do, we're going to get more and more interested in going. Some of them are just scared to fly, they say. Some of them don't want to leave home. So I think as time goes on, more and more, we'll transition and go.
Thank you.
So just breaking down, where is also some of that funding going? So our regular education program, diverse learners, emerging bilinguals, and this is mostly just all salaries, which covers about eighty-five percent of our budget. What's the return on our investment? Here's the data for our special ed students over the past four years. The light green is their math, and the E L A is the dark green. So you see, they're showing steady increases in growth. So it's working out what we're doing. We're getting a return on our investments, so we want to keep doing that. And parents are liking that because we keep getting more and more coming into the district as our enrollment's going up.
How many diverse learners do we have in the district right now?
Do we know? Hundred and eighty.
Okay, so a decent-sized dataset.
Correct.
Thank you.
Our preschool program, which we fund completely, we do not get any state or federal grants for that program. And because we don't get any state or federal grants, we are allowed to teach what we want to teach. When you get federal funds, you have to teach their curriculum. It's a very low-level play-based curriculum. We want to make sure we're teaching reading and writing and other content areas. We're also doing that play-based with them. So we fund our program free, and it's free for all Forest Park residents. If we got federal funding, we'd have to charge for it, so it'd be based on income. So if you accept the federal funding, then those that enroll, they pay, it's on a sliding scale based on their income, so it wouldn't be free. What we spend on our challenge program, our supplemental support, that's our reading and math interventionist. That is another thing we have committed to. We've made sure each school has a reading and math interventionist instead of just having one for the district. So that is why we've seen an increase in our E L A also, its foreign teachers, and we're hoping to see the same thing at math with the new curriculum this year. Improvement in instruction, that is our curriculum department, to provide professional development for our staff. The other great thing about Forest Park is we provide a free after-school program, so that's our extracurricular programs. We have about a hundred and sixty students that take martial arts, and some of them are on their third and fourth belt already because I see, I get the notice every time they move up a level on another belt. But in addition to that, that's our multimedia, that's our dance program, that's our theater program, and that is what we fund the district, so parents don't have to cover that cost. Health services, guidance services, social workers, I mentioned to you. We make sure we have social worker at each school. We have a health services staff at each school also. So these are additional costs that we're spending to make sure that we're being the needs of our students. Our psychological services and speech therapy services, make sure to meet the needs of our I P students. And then just overall, our, what do we spend as a district leadership, library services, and district operations? Make sure we keep the buildings running, and, you know, there's heat and there's A C in the building when it needs to be there. So for our revenue trends, as you can see, as I mentioned, in twenty twenty-four, we got a lot more income than we thought we would get, and that's because it was from twenty twenty-three revenue. If you look at twenty twenty-three, we got a lot less revenue than we were undersourced, but the county never told us that money was coming. I don't even think they knew they owed us the money. So as they constantly audit the books and go through, and they update to this new system, they're allocating the funds appropriately to the districts that they said they will get it right as soon as they finish going through these growing pains, as they called it. We haven't had our twenty twenty-five audits, so that's why we don't know what was the total amount that came in. In terms of revenue, eighty-five percent of our revenue comes from local sources. We only get about six point eight percent from the state, and that six point eight percent's never going to go down. That's what we're guaranteed now. Ever since they changed the funding formula in twenty seventeen, that's the bare minimum that we'll ever get. So it'll only go up from there. Federal funding's about eight point one percent. It's a little high. It's going to be going down. We've already seen for this upcoming year. We got less funding for professional development. We got less funding for school support. So they're decreasing all the federal grants that you normally get. So every year, in, I believe it's like around March, when you approve for me to work on the consolidation plan, that's a plan for a district to apply for federal funding. And now that we've done that, we submitted, now that they're giving us those amounts, but they're a lot less than they were last year. They're probably about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars less than they were last year. So what we project our revenues on, we're projecting getting interest of only about thirty thousand dollars. That has been what our trend was been in the past, but the market has done well for the past couple of years, so we did receive more than that. But I'm just going to keep it as a projection to just thirty thousand dollars, hoping the market stables off. If we do better, great. Looking at, we collect ninety-nine percent of our revenue. That's what we've been averaging. State revenue saying that we're only going to get about eighty-five percent of it. If they give us more, great. Federal revenue say we're only going to get about ninety percent of it, and that's projecting a little bit less just to be on the conservative side. And then our equalized assessment values, consumer price index, looking at that. We have seen a decrease in our P P R T revenues, and it went down, you see about thirty-two percent. That's just the, from the assessment values and what the state collects and they give us, that's the decrease that we received. This is the slide I was telling you about that I shared with you. So because we have no revenue coming in, by December, we're looking to only have about twenty-one point seven million. Right now, we have about thirty million, so it's constantly decreasing. So when you see those financial statements each month, and you're like, where's the money going? It's because we're getting no revenue coming in. So we expend on average about one point seven to two million dollars per month, and that's why it's going to keep decreasing. We are in a good enough position to go fourteen months, six months in operations, about nine months transportation, eleven months in our retirement funds from now. So hopefully, we could manage that, and hopefully, we get revenue coming in before then. But I know tax bills have not even went out, so they haven't collected anything yet. So we will see when those go out. There are four districts in our area that I know that are really struggling. If you remember last time, those four districts had to borrow significantly just to pay payroll and keep the lights on. They are looking to do that again, just because they just don't have the revenue or the reserves to move forward. Any questions regarding the budget? I will be asking later on that you approve the budget, feeling that is, this budget will meet the needs of our students for this year and make sure our staff feel supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hubbard. Number five, consent agenda for the board. Is there anything anyone would like removed? All right, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Roll call?
Jed Brewer.
Aye.
Andrea Morello.
Aye.
Monique Cotton.
Aye.
John Lyons. Steve Rommel.
Aye.
Monica Angelo.
Aye.
Shannon Woods.
Aye. Number six, correspondence? Something? Okay. Number seven, matters of consideration from the public? No? Okay. And number eight, interim superintendent's report. Dr. Hubbard, back to you.
Thank you. The enduring power of September eleven attacks is clear, and overwhelming share of Americans remember where they were that day in those attacks. I was living in another country at the time, and I was running up a mountain. It was about four-thirty in the morning, and normally, no one's out at that time. And everyone was just outside on the streets, and I'm like, what is going on? And everyone was pointing at me, and they were saying, American, American, and like, you need to go home. And that you need to see what's going on. They meant me like, go home to my house to see, because I had no idea what was going on. And I was like, why is everyone pointing at me? And then I stopped and talked to someone, and they told me, and they explained it to me as best they can. And I ran all the way back home and turned on the TV to see what was going on. But then also, on the flip side, there's a lot of people that are living right now that don't know or remember anything about it because they were not born. So we just want to make sure that they take time to remember their history and know their history. A little more than three thousand people lost their lives that day, and it was a very great tragedy, and we hope nothing like that ever happens again. September also marks Latino Heritage Month, which is September fifteenth through October fifteenth. Let's continue to recognize the contributions and influence of Latino culture to the nation's achievements and culture and history. Each school will be celebrated in their own different ways, and we'd share that with you later on. Priority number one, learning and achievement. Unfortunately, we are living in a time where we must prepare for the unimaginable. The safety of every student and staff member is a top priority. For the past year and a half, we have collaborated with surrounding districts to adopt I love you guys safety protocol. Our staff has extensive, has overwhelmed extensive training over this past summer. In collaboration with local police departments, fire department, and the surrounding districts, we have created a reunification plan for each school. We're not sharing these plans publicly. If I was right, they're keeping them private. But we want everyone to know that we have developed these plans in collaboration with those partners. We hope and pray that we never have to use these plans, and we have them, and they stay on the shelf, they continue to collect us. But if not, we want the community to know that we do have these plans in place. There's been a lot of training over the summer. There was a two-day training for a handful of staff members, and then there was a four-day training for another handful of staff members. So then everyone should understand and know their role. And with the collaboration and intergovernmental agreement that we have with the surrounding districts, if one of them needed help because they had an emergency, we have our staff members that are trained to go to their facility and lead it. If we had an emergency, their staff members are trained to come to our facility and lead it. So that's the agreement that we have with each other.
Can you talk a little bit about the collaboration with the local police and fire?
Yes, they were, they helped develop the plans, and it wasn't just our police and fire department. It was the ones from all the districts. So they all worked together to develop the plans and make sure we had all the components needed for it. So it was nice to have everyone at the table.
Have they been in the building so they understand the layouts and things like that?
They have not, but I did meet with them, and they want to start coming in to do that and walking them so they know that. And our, our police and fire is not only going to walk our buildings, they're going to walk the other district buildings too so that they get to know them. Because if one of those districts had a tragedy, we would go there and help them lead. Because they're going to be busy trying to deal with it, and then we- Because they're gonna be busy trying to deal with it and then we'd be helping them lead it.
What kind of coordination do we do with like the teachers and then like parents and everything? Just so that they understand if, you know, if there's first responders in the building, it doesn't mean something is going on, it could be training or something like that.
Um, we will make sure we communicate that when that happens with the staff to let them know that we're just walking through the building so that they know. It's gonna be random because it's when they're available. Um, but they, I did communicate with them, they could just reach out to me or reach out to the principal when they have time to go through and walk through and then they could do it that day.
Thank you.
Over the summer around this time, we always share with you our access data, which is with our, the assessment our multilingual students have taken. And we don't get the data to over the summer, so that's why I share with you now. But also shows another return on your investment. We want to make sure that we see green and blue. And if you see, overall, we see all green, so they're making their growth. And as the previous slide has shown, we have doubled our population of that over the past four years. Um, this slide shows the breakdown between ELA and math. We have one blue and that's at Forest Park Middle School for our ELA. And the rest are green, the goal is to make sure they all stay in green or move in transition to that blue, which is that higher growth. And I believe here it's maybe a little hard to see, but 78% of them are making growth or above average growth for ELA and 73% of them for math. So the vast majority of them, our goal is to get to about that 80 and 85% mark and we're not that far off from it. And we're fully staffed this year in the EL department, so hopefully with the fully staff, we can get there this year. If you remember, each month I said that we were gonna showcase a grade. And I reached out to those schools and those principals, let them know they could showcase the information however they'd like to showcase it. This month it is the sixth graders and they decided to make a video. So I'm not giving you the heads up because I hit slide, the video's gonna start playing, but it is the sixth grader showcasing what they have learned so far and what their plan is for the next year moving, for this year moving forward.
Orientation was both exciting and overwhelming with all the hallways and schedules, but now I actually know where the cafeteria is.
Middle school is kind of like elementary school, older siblings, bigger, louder, with more opportunities.
In science class, we did, did this experiment with glowing beads that change color in the UV light. I was, it was like magic, but with explanations.
We're practicing critical thinking by thinking about why and how concept works. We want to use evidence from our lives and readings to give good explanations of what's going on.
Now I can use what I learned about analyzing evidence to make better informed decisions. I can also figure out if that viral TikTok is actually true or just made up.
We are also practicing this skill in social studies. We're learning to ask investigating questions like how is Abraham Lincoln important to this event? Or why did this affect us another? It's like being a detective.
These questioning skills are helping me make better inferences and will definitely help me in high school and beyond.
The teachers are really nice and want to help us succeed, but they definitely expect us to take responsibility for our own learning.
But honestly, the most challenging part of sixth grade, these lockers are like puzzle boxes designed by evil geniuses. There's still more to discover about middle school.
Roar!
We're not requiring every grade level to showcase to do a video. This is what they chose to do, video, whatever the other grade levels decide to do. Some of them said they may want to come and talk to the board and talk about what they're doing. So I told them whatever they like to do, um, that, that is their right to do and showcase how they're learning for this year. Priority number two, family and community engagement. Family Connection Night was a great success. I just want to say thank you to the community partners for their participation, the Forest Park PTO, the Historical Society of Forest Park and the Art Alliance, Engage Church, various local scout organizations, Community Center, Forest, the park district of Forest Park, Forest Park Library, Legacy Sports and, um, the D91 departments that also participated in the event. We have Parent University coming up. Um, if you recall, we had Parent University last year and we're bringing it back and tweaking it a little bit this year. New this year, be backpacks to briefcase, a series of workshops and casual gatherings to support the male caregivers in our students' lives. And our first ever, we'll have a health vendors offering free screening and we will have a winter physical activity for caregivers and their students. The idea is to come out to the virtual conference from last October that to spoke, to speak about the benefits of intentional outreach to our students. So there's some of the upcoming events and the dates that are happening. See some of these are jodding this down, so I'll, I'll wait. And special shots at PTO, we now have one PTO, they're doing an amazing job. I love how they're planning for the whole year and everything they're putting together. We have the Field Ice Cream Social coming up on the 16th, Betsy Ross Ice Cream Social on the 18th. Make sure you sign up and register for the Color Fun Run on the 20th, that's at 9:00 AM. It's always great to see the children out there and all the different colors they're covered with in the running that they appreciate. And then there, there's a meeting on October 1st. And now also, as I shared, um, in my timeline, just to get to know more parents and be engaged with them, I'm gonna have a quick coffee with the parents in the morning, stopping off at each school. There's gonna be a little coffee cart, they could get hot coffee or iced coffee, whichever they prefer. But it will start at 7:45, the first one's on the 16th at Betsy Ross and then at Garfield and then Phil Stevenson's in the middle school on the 22nd. And ones welcome to step by and get some coffee and just engage in, with them and talk about things that they're looking forward for the upcoming year. And then also as our strategic plan is sunsetting this year, um, we are having our second town hall meeting. We had the first one in the spring, second one is gonna be October 2nd, it's gonna be at 6:30 at the middle school. Please make sure you sign up and register for it. We have had people already registering, so that's nice to see, but we just want to encourage more and more people to register and come out and share with us our ideals on what they want to see here at Forest Park School District moving forward for the next strategic plan. Priority number three, talent recruitment and development. Here are the positions we still have open, we have our youth interventionists, we have, oh, I gotta take that permanent sub. We just hired someone, so you gotta take that one, we just hired someone. Um, we still need a couple instructional assistants in part-time. We need a social engagement coordinator and we need a lunch supervisor. We've had no FOIA requests, I'm glad to say that. That is it.
Thank you. Number nine, committee reports, uh, board policy?
Oh, yes. Um, we'll be recommending a little bit later on that we approve the press bundle that was sent out um, with no changes made to it.
Superintendent search, Mr. Rommel, Mr. Lyons?
The, uh, we just started, so we've got a bunch of critical information. We'll be sending it out to the rest of the board, some information from the, the various search firms in the very near future.
Number 10, items for discussion, uh, Dr. Hubbard, certified personnel compensation report?
Because we are a government organization, each year we have to post the salaries of our admin and teachers online and we also have to post any IMRF employees that make over $75,000. So this is an annual thing. So this is letting you know that those reports have been generated and tomorrow they'll be posted on our district website.
Number 11, may I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss the employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of an employee and discussion of individual student placement issue?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are now in closed session. All right, we are back in open session. Number 12, bless you. May I have a motion to approve the July-August Personnel Board Report as discussed in closed session?
So moved.
Second?
September, I didn't adjust my notes, September, sorry. Let me try that again. May I have a motion to approve the September Personnel Board Report as discussed in closed session?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please?
Jed Burr.
Aye.
Andrea Morello.
Aye.
Monique Cotton.
Aye.
John Lyons.
Aye.
Steve Rommel.
Aye.
Monica Angelo, aye. Shannon Woods.
Aye. Number 13, may I have a motion to approve the amendment to the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations slash CSBO Contract of Employment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
As discussed last meeting, um, may I have a roll call?
Jed Burr.
Aye.
Andrea Morello.
Aye.
Monique Cotton.
Aye.
John Lyons.
Aye.
Steve Rommel.
Aye.
Monica Angelo, aye. Uh, Shannon Woods.
Aye. Uh, number 14, may I have a motion to terminate Danielle Johnson's probationary teaching employment due to her having abandoned her position and/or no longer being able or qualified to teach in the district as recommended by the administration?
So moved.
Second.
As discussed in closed session, may I have a roll call?
Jed Burr.
Aye.
Andrea Morello.
Aye.
Monique Cotton.
Aye.
John Lyons.
Aye.
Steve Rommel.
Aye.
Monica Angelo, aye. Shannon Woods.
Aye. All right, items for action under Dr. Hubbard. Number one, may I have a motion to consider the adoption of the resolution for fiscal year 2026 annual budget?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion?
This is the budget I was presented during the budget hearing earlier today.
May I have a roll call?
Jed Burr.
Aye.
Andrea Morello.
Aye.
Monique Cotton.
Aye.
John Lyons.
Aye.
Steve Rommel.
Aye.
Monica Angelo, aye. And Shannon Woods.
Aye. Number two, may I have a motion to consider, no, to approve the fifth grade overnight outdoor education trip for school year 2025, 2026, not to exceed $14,159.70?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
This is the annual trip that our fifth graders go on, they get to explore. This is the max amount if everyone goes.
How does this amount compare with priors?
Um, I believe it's up about 4%.
Is this Iron Oaks?
No, this is Covetant Harbor.
Ah, thank you.
The middle school, I think sixth and seventh grade are going to Iron Oaks and it's a day trip.
Thank you.
May I have a roll call?
Jed Burr.
Aye.
Andrea Morello.
Aye.
Monique Cotton.
Aye.
John Lyons.
Aye.
Steve Rommel.
Aye.
Monica Angelo, aye. And Shannon Woods.
Aye. Number three, may I have a motion to approve the transfer of $1.5 million of budget authority from the Education Fund to Operations and Maintenance Fund, $750,000 and Transportation Fund, $750,000. In addition, recommendation to approve the transfer of $250,000 of budget authority from working cash fund 70 to tort fund 80.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
This is to cover the negative balances we are gonna have in those accounts because we're not receiving any revenue from the state. So this is to make sure that those counts are not going to negative over the next three or four months.
May I have a roll call?
Jed Burr.
Aye.
Andrea Morello.
Aye.
Monique Cotton.
Aye.
John Lyons.
Aye.
Steve Rommel.
Aye.
Monica Angelo, aye. And Shannon Woods.
Aye. Uh, number 16, no, not number 16. Four, right?
Yes, 15 to four.
May I have a motion to approve the Board Policy Press Bundle 118 as recommended by the Board Policy Committee?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? As discussed earlier?
As discussed earlier.
Okay, um, may I have a roll call?
Jed Burr.
Aye.
Andrea Morello.
Aye.
Monique Cotton.
Aye.
John Lyons.
Aye.
Steve Rommel.
Aye.
Monica Angelo, aye. Shannon Woods.
Aye. Now we're at number 16, additional matters of consideration from the board. Okay, I'll just say, um, I hope everybody had a great start to the school year. It was really nice to see families and students and staff at the Family Connection Nights. I enjoyed, um, I have a middle schooler, so we were given a schedule and he had to go to the rooms and he had two minutes to go to the next class period. Um, I really did enjoy doing that, um, to get a little bit of insight in their day. Yeah, and I hope everybody can come out to the PTO ice cream socials, come have coffee with Dr. Hubbard, um, color run, and don't forget our, um, town hall October 2nd. Um, with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is now 7:27 and this meeting has been adjourned.